All the meeting to order, please.
Just to clerk what you call a roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
You have it for him.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There being no public hearings tonight, I'd like to call on the VFW to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Steve Oppler with the Morton VFW. I'm here to request a donation for the Fourth of July fireworks for this year, the same amount as last year of $5,000.
So moved, Your Honor. We've done this for several years.
Second.
Was that Sam?
Sam was second. No, Randy was second.
Randy was second.
Yep.
Thanks for doing that.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
No questions?
Thanks. What is your title, Mr. Abol?
Mine? I'm the adjutant.
Adjutant?
Thanks. Spell that for 10 points.
Thank you.
At this point, we will ask the audience if there's anyone here who would like to make a public comment.
Doug Frank here, 1240 Bretwood, here in town. I'd went and saw, regarding veterans float, and I talked to Jennifer Daly about this. She said they weren't allowed to have it unless they took the cage off because the cage was too scary, is what she was told me. Now, here the Chamber of Commerce sponsored her trip to China, or EDC sponsored her trip to China, and our veterans can't have a float regardless of what's on there. I mean, throw a couple pumpkins on if she wants or something, but just because it's got a cage on it, I don't think that's, I think that you should be allowed to have what they want. I think they're entitled. And second, on Veterans Day for the last three years, that's the same day that they put up their Christmas decorations. So you got, that's on November 11th, and they got trucks going, putting up their big candy canes and wreaths and all this stuff on the light poles. I think we could put that off for at least another week for Pete's sake, for Veterans Day. And then, the other thing I want to cover is on last month's meeting, right out of the gate was Ann talking about that property on Worthington, Maine, and that still ain't settled. I mean, that's, you guys voted to buy this, say, two years ago. Now, we've got it, and the mayor's solution, it ended up being, she's supposed to take it up with Dean Graham. But you know what? I think everybody here, we need to do something to settle that thing and be done with it once and for all. To be lingering around like this is nuts. And, you know, you guys have talked about doing condos and Sandy Hook thing and the fountain up there, whatever, but I'd say give the whole thing to the VFW and the American Legion. Let them have the whole work. And, but we got to get that thing settled once and for all. That property's sitting there. Doing, I mean, it's a mess. And then, the other thing on last month was school buses. Moving that out there at our expense, that is a school business deal. That is not city's deal, and that's going to cost us all kinds of million bucks. That is, the school district has, they got 25 million that's sitting in the bank. They should be doing that on their own. They want another place for their buses, they should be financing that, not us. And I don't think they're taking stuff into consideration for the people that are driving the buses. You know, a lot of them are the elderly people or women, and you got them on the outskirts of town. You think they, I mean, they really don't want to be out there. I can't imagine they do by themselves. And then, the other thing that, I will say, four years ago, six years ago actually, I come about fixing up Greenwood because it's, sidewalks were like gravel road. They are being done this year. There was no wheelchair ramps in them. But four years ago, I was told it was a priority from this board here. And it is being done this year in September, I guess. But that's a long time for a priority. And we got plenty of other streets that are in need that are sloppy like in Jefferson, and there's all kinds of missing curbs and stuff all over. And all we do is keep throwing this money to downtown and doing that, go behind these closed doors last week, doing that for last month, that plaza. People really don't want that plaza, and that's costing us another $2.5 million, and for what? People don't want it. I think $2.5 million is something that the majority of people do not want. And I vote we get rid of that sister city thing in China, too, to be my vote. Thank you.
Well, just a sec. I, there's too many things for us to try to answer. If it was one or two, I would ask the trustees to weigh in and give you an answer because there are good answers to all of these things. If you send me an email or give me that list, I'll try and get back to you though.
I'll give you the list because I don't know how to email.
Give me the list.
Okay.
And we'll try and get back to you on it.
Okay. All right.
Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Would anybody in the audience like to remove anything from the consent agenda? The consent agenda is, this time is just minutes and approval of the bills and one ordinance that we talked about last time. Would any of the trustees like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I have a question about one item.
Go ahead.
Okay, on the bills, the bill that comes under business district tax for Farnsworth for $5,300.70, I just wonder what that was for. Was for street or what it was for?
Let me ask the administrator if she'd answer that.
That is the last, we had an $85,000, if you remember, the board voted on $85,000 that they were going to pay to design the plaza. That was the last chunk of that bill.
Okay, so it's from a prior bill, it's not a new one.
It's not. It's just, you know, they build based on services and how they provide them, so this is the very last piece on that.
Okay.
Does that take care of it?
Yeah. As to whether it's new or old.
Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? So moved, Your Honor.
Steve.
Second.
Call a roll. Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
I just have one item myself, and that's reappointment of Bob Snare and Joe Worth to the police pension fund. I've checked around and talked to folks who are familiar with what goes on and who's involved, and they believe these two gentlemen have done a great job. I talked to both of them, and they were both very willing to go ahead and continue to serve on the pension fund board. Could I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Call a roll. Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Does the village clerk have anything?
Nothing vector on it.
Village administrator.
First thing I wanted to mention is that there have been reports that electricity marketers have begun door-to-door and telephone campaigns in the village to secure their electric service. And I just wanted to make the residents aware that the electric aggregation program that we sponsored has a rate of .0408 per kilowatt hour. This is lower than what residents will pay under the terms of individual contracts that are being offered with these door-to-door solicitations and telemarketers. Our residents are not required under our aggregation program to sign a contract. They're not going to be called by anyone or visited by a salesperson. There's a little bit of confusion because oftentimes what the residents are being faced with is the marketers are comparing to Illinois Amaran, or Amaran, Illinois rates, which are higher than what our program is offering. So with that, also our program, we don't have hidden or variable rates within it. It's the .0408 through May of 2014. People should be aware, residents should be aware, and review all the contract terms. They should ask about any additional charges. They should not feel pressured to take action right away. From my understanding, oftentimes they are pressured to do this right away. And if anyone is concerned or has a question, if they are in our program, they can call Homefield Energy, which is our supplier, at 866-694-1262, or visit the website, and that information is there. It's under the services, municipal electric aggregation. So that's the first thing.
Wendy, real quick with that, isn't it Ginger informed us in the last meeting that all they actually even need is if a resident actually gives them their account number with Homefield Energy, that's actually all they need, and their services can be switched, so.
Yeah, well, if they give them their, it's their Amaran account number. Homefield uses the Amaran account number. So if they get your Amaran account number, then they can switch you. They're supposed to do certain things, like let you know the contract terms and all of that. We can't be sure that they are doing that.
Yeah, technically, you're always going to have three days in any situation as far as a contract to cancel that contract, but the problem would be is in the process time and the time that they're going to have to do all of that would be a problem.
Right, well, and they would get a letter from Amaran saying they're going to be switched, and at that point, if they didn't want to go on that plan, they would need to call Amaran and let them know. This is Amaran's busiest time of year, just with, I believe, with the tree, like cutting trees, doing all of that. So they're getting a lot of calls, so it just makes it kind of difficult. So we just wanted to make sure our residents were aware. And the second item on my list is I am asking approval to transfer $18,000 from the general fund and $500 from the water depreciation fund to the capital projects fund. And this pays, this is just to pay for the various infrastructure projects that are taking place within the village. Some of the things that we do is street overlays, sanitary sewer lining, Greenwood Street, as was mentioned, things such as that. So that's what we're doing here.
Thank you. Do any of the trustees have any questions? Do the administrator? Chief, please. I'm sorry. So moved.
I was just willing to take your other word.
Second.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporate counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works.
We have two items tonight, Your Honor. First, I'd like to ask for acceptance of the bid for a 2014 one-ton cabin chassis pickup for the water distribution department in the amount of $18,770. That includes the trade and award of contract for same to Bob Graham Chevrolet.
Could I have a motion? So moved. Second.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
The second item, I'd like to ask for acceptance of the bid for 2013 tractor loader backhoe for the water distribution department in the amount of $35,595. This includes guaranteed buyback and award of same, award of contract for same to Al Corp. Incorporated. And that, that machine, we have four backhoes. We actually purchased these backhoes, but with that get a guaranteed buyback option. We get really good government pricing, so this works out to be a good deal to basically, after, after five years, we get a brand-new machine for about $35,000.
It's a guaranteed trade-in price.
It's a guaranteed trade-in, so it works, works out really good for the village.
Motion, please. So moved. Second.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Planning and zoning.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village trustees, let me start with trustee Belsley.
Yes, at our last board meeting, I introduced ordinance 13-01, and that was an ordinance prohibiting all recreational operations of motorcycles, motorbikes, ATVs, and snowmobiles and similar vehicles on privately-owned property, residentially-zoned in Morton on that. And we typically, as we have in the past, our customary, we hold that over for consideration and review by the public, and I'm bringing it back tonight for a vote. Before I make a motion, though, for that, I thought I'd just, again, restate some of the points, our notes on the ordinance, of what it's addressing, what's purpose, and what it does allow, I guess, is it doesn't prohibit totally the use of any of those vehicles in the corporate limits of Morton. We had a provision in there that it does allow the use of these, the operation of these recreational vehicles in district-zoned RS, or residential suburban. And as I stated at the last meeting, residential suburban for the village of Morton and our zoning ordinances, our zoning code, that is comparable to agriculturally-zoned land, and with the further restriction of five acres or greater. So just to clarify or restate again, you can operate these vehicles in RS, or residential suburban, zoned districts on sites that are five acres or greater in the village of Morton. It also will allow you to continue use of vehicles for yard, lawn and garden, landscape maintenance, building, construction-related projects, new construction, building additions, remodeling, so it's not going to restrict the use of those vehicles for those purposes either. We just tweaked the ordinance slightly. Attorney Davies, upon further review of this, wanted to make it even, in his opinion, more clear in terms of what vehicles this applies to, so he actually added two phrases in there under definitions, and it strictly is actually to clarify it, and it's actually language taken from the Illinois vehicle code. So it's, in his opinion, he makes it a little more clear as what applies and what doesn't. And because a question did come up, and we're not intending through this ordinance to prohibit the use of battery-operated vehicles, I think there's a lot of.
Part wheels.
Yeah, there's a lot of kids today that have small battery-operated vehicles that they use for their own enjoyment, and that's not something that we're trying to prohibit or limit through that ordinance as well. So the clarification with the definition of what it applies to was intended to address that as well. I really don't have any other comments for that. I, with that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance tonight.
Second.
I'll second.
Dobbs. Any discussion from the trustees?
I was just wondering what was the driving reason? Have we had a lot of complaints on it, or what's?
There have been complaints over the last couple of years, a couple incidents where it was really incidents where you, on larger properties, that resulted in actually a dirt track being created or developed, that where the individuals, the residents, were using their property to ride motorcycles, dirt bikes, commonly known as, on their property. And just the nature of that activity is really not conducive to a residential setting. I mean, just due to the fumes, the noise, it's just not favorable for that atmosphere. We did have a number of complaints from that, and what resulted was this ordinance. We did look at this as whether this should be a zoning matter or a police matter, and what we're advised through Attorney Davies is this really should be treated as a nuisance because it's the activity on the property and not the use of the property itself. It's the activity that we're prohibiting here. So that's why it is brought up through the police ordinances and will be treated accordingly for enforcement purposes.
Any further discussion? Call a roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Dobbs, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Herr.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Kaufman.
A couple of plans. Amaran will be doing some tree trimming and performing vegetation management within the village of Morton in the next couple of weeks probably, but Amaran will be mailing or getting, notifying the citizens which properties that would be, but they will be in the area, trimming their trees and doing vegetation control. The other thing I'd like to address, the comments on the bus garage, and just clean it up a little bit, save a little time. The bus garage, everything within the fenced-in area, the school is paying for. We're not paying nothing for that. We are paying for a little concrete outside the fenced-in area for our water, storage, tank building, and for future developments, and some cameras, which we have the capacity of watching from the, from the firehouse, so safety is of the utmost there for all the drivers. Concerning the plaza, I think public opinion is still out on how the plaza is going to go down. It's going very slowly. There's all kinds of little bumps and turns in that, and we're being very cautious about spending business district tax money, so I think public opinion will rule in the end, and we'll see where that goes. That's all I had, Your Honor.
That doesn't require a vote, does it?
No.
Trustee Newhouse.
Three items tonight, Your Honor. I'm going to change the order just slightly. If you look at your plats in front of you, the one on top, I believe, is the Gingrich subdivision, and this is very simply the platting off of a parcel to allow the sale of that parcel to a former, I believe they're renter of the property, is now buying the piece of property. That's Chris Winiger's auto service shop off in Nebraska. This is, let's say, basically a straightforward replating associated with the sale of a piece of the property. Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Sam, second.
Any discussion? Call a roll.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Okay, now, while we're on the subject of plats, take a look at the second one, the larger one, that is Wolf Crossing Phase 3. Now, this is slightly out of order. Typically, this requires an annexation agreement, but through no fault of the applicant, Mr. Erdmeyer, that portion of the process has been delayed, but in order to allow him to continue with his engineering, we are subjecting the final plat to approval subject to the annexation agreement, and that benefits both the village and the applicant. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Sam.
Herr.
I'd like to make one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does that include all the, where I see the drainage easements and that on here, our agreements for the trees, for damage to the trees on these areas where we have easements? I take it we have one here with drainage easement?
Are you, are you talking the shaded area?
Yeah.
The shaded areas should be where the detention basin is, so they will have to, you know, build the basin down there at the bottom.
But in the future, to get there, to maintain it, we have an agreement where the, any damage to trees or overhanging it?
Yes.
Because we have that, we'll have that in place.
We'll get that taken care of.
So we're not liable for.
And they'll have to have a path to get down there to get to it. And as a side note to that, this will be on that lot, I guess it'd be the farthest northeast lot, it will be attached to their property. That's a, that's been a big thing that we've had, is these basins are put, you know, off-site, and then we, we end up with it in the end, the village. We have no intentions of ever taking over a detention basin, so we're trying to make sure that those.
But just so the lot owners next to it know their oak's hanging over, it could be cut damage or whatever within that easement, and no liability to the village, we have to maintain it.
Yes.
Yeah, that is pursuant to the action last year in which we restated the requirement that builders must include the water detention and the engineering in order to open a new phase, and the, any water detention is required to be clearly identified as property related to the subdivision, so that we don't wind up with the village taking accountability.
But we have to have the tree agreements in here because we've run into this before, wooded lots, 10 years down the road, somebody thinks that there are tree overhanging easement, and we have serious cutting we have to do. We can't have that liability.
Okay. Call for vote.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Okay, last item, and in some ways the more important one, but just a point of curiosity. Show of hands, how many people here tonight are here because of the old Restmore question? Anybody? No? Okay. Quite a few people attended the planning commission meeting. There's been a lot of interest in this, and of course, the old Restmore site has been around for a long time, and a lot of concern in the neighborhood about what would ultimately happen to it. And we now have a proposal for its acquisition and renovation as a residential retirement site. The selling company is named Phyvee, I believe it is, that is the local company created by the current owners, and they will be selling to a company called Miller Valentine Group in each of your positions, and I think we've got a few extra copies for anyone who's interested, is some information from the website for Miller Valentine. It's a 50-year-old company with a long track record of commercial and residential development and management and senior housing. The proposition includes about 50 units, give or take, that would be one-bedroom and two-bedroom living units. These, this is for age 55 mobile seniors. This is not a medical facility, it's not a rest home, it's not an assisted living home. It would be similar in concept to Brandon Wood already established here. And Morton's probably going to be an eight to $10 million investment, and it looks like a very good resolution for the property. It requires a special use permit as part of the residential zoning, but is otherwise perfectly permissible, so the application here is for the special use, and that is petition number 13-07SP, in case anybody is interested, but I move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Excuse me. Did we want to add that contingent on the sale? Contingent, yes, it is, yes, thank you. It is, the special use is contingent on the completion of the sale from Phyvee to Miller Valentine. Thank you.
Need a second? Second. Sam. Any discussion?
Call a roll. Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Last item on the agenda is a call for a closed session. We have a human resources issue we would like to deal with privately under public section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act, 5ILCS 120/again, 2C1. We also want to discuss some potential property negotiations under 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act, a citation, 5ILCS 120/2C5. I do not believe there will be any action taken after this, so anyone in the audience and all of the staff may leave if they wish.